Okay.
So we're, we have our special meeting agenda coming after order. Uh, we're at seven P M instead of six fifty-five. John, would you like to do a roll call?
Dean Serwin.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
Annie Chang Long.
Here.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
F J Pratt.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our council liaison is not here, but we do have the mayor. In present. So, um, is the public comment to the special meeting or to the general?
We can do it first. It doesn't make any difference. I mean, it doesn't, we have to offer a public comment. If the Mallings want to go now, they can do that.
If you want to go during the regular meeting, go right now, not a problem. Okay, well, so we have published comments. Very excited. It's our first public comment. So I have a public comment card here.
For me?
Uh, the first leg of view from David Mallon. And they're, they're here to discuss.
You don't.
Measure L and I can't read anything that you wrote there.
Um, discussion about measure L and health safety for the library in the library part.
Okay, great. Okay, would you share to us there?
Well, thank you, everybody.
I believe you're limited to three minutes, but there's two of you. So if anyone doesn't have a problem, you can, you can go.
Leave me alone, sweetie.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to be here today. I would like you to take a look at this first picture. And the reason why, my name's David Mallon, Mr. Monique Mallon. We're at eleven fourteen Diamond Avenue. And I would say from door to door, we're probably less than a hundred yards away. That's our porch. We've been here since two thousand and two that we bought our home. We're raising two wonderful kids, uh, fifteen and seventeen years of age. And when you look at this photo, and I took this photo, this just only reminds me of the time that we used to spend with our kids, and we still do. Spend going into the library and what an asset the library is to the city of South Pasadena. This is the reason why we're all here. Um, when you look at it and you look at this photo, you think about the beautiful things that you see at the city of South Pasadena and what the library offers. When it comes to competition between which amenity is the best in city of South Pasadena, whether it's the library or the Royal Parks. Boy, I'm gonna still go with the library. It is to me an amenity. It was essential. It is essential for the reason why we're here in South Pasadena. And why, um, uh, you want to wonder, it helps you out, all that stuff. And when you take a look at this exterior, you've got availability of, it just, it's all green. Look at this. You have bike racks that are, that recently been installed where our kids could come, park their, um, bicycles, lock them up and go to the library. Then you've got these wonderful tables here where some people would say the library is just for insight. No way. When the architects designed this and the future council people in the past and, and our predecessors, their whole idea with this library park was not just for enjoying and learning inside, but for being inside outsiders as well. Let's go to the next page. And I know this is redundant in some of these things, but you're gonna see my points. The next picture is the big tree. It's on the first page. Big tree. This big tree is, is a landmark when it comes to the city of South Pasadena. I mean, our kids grew up here. When you, right now, we've got farmer's market going. You're seeing kids climb over that tree. Just, just an unbelievable experience. The memories that have happened on this one. Let's go to now the next picture. And that's our community room. We've been talking about the upbringing of our kids and how wonderful the library is, and it's also for its senior citizens. But this community room has been an incredible benefit to the citizens of South Pasadena when it comes to all activities. One of the best incredible events I've been to was a fuel house or event. I don't know if anybody else attended it, but it was a video that never made P D S. We got to see it. It was incredible. And if you're a California Boulder fan as I am, you would have really appreciated. And the most recent thing I did here in the community room was witness to Chad Band from the Heist. That's just recently. Let's go to the next slide. So as we all mature, the city of South Pasadena offers this incredible senior citizen center. It's just an unbelievable amenity and it's to all of the residents. And let me state that in the beginning, all these photographs are for all of the residents in the city of South Pasadena. Let's go to the next slide. Measure L is coming up in November. In my opinion, this is a very important measure for the city of South Pasadena. And it needs to be passed. It's clear, when you take a look at this slide, twenty percent of the income comes from measure L. This is really important. And if you take a look at it on the third line, preserving, um, or no, without this funding, the library will make significant cuts to staffing, library hours, and services. We can't allow that to happen. We need to have measure L pass. This is something that was established in nineteen ninety-four, and it's to help the city of South Pasadena. And if this doesn't happen, you know, it's gonna be very tough for the city to, to make up the difference. So you're all seeing this, though, David. We know this. We are fans. We're on the commission. Why are you taking the time? There's a concern. Just recently, um, my wife and I unfortunately had substantial, not substantial, we had vandalism and trespassing that happened on our property. It has been a direct result for the last three years, the increase of individuals that have been coming to the park and into the library um, causing crime, violating codes, um, of using the privileges here in the city of South Pasadena. Where all of our residents have been unable to use the facilities to the full extension that we want to. Let's go to the next picture. I'm gonna give you some criticals here. Right in front of the library have been a very unwelcoming situation. Um, and I want, don't want to get into the topic. I don't want to name, name or anything in the backstory, but this has been a situation that everybody's fully aware of. It has caused a very unhealthy as well as unsafe environment. In addition to what has happened to the front porch, to the left side as you enter the library, you know, being a little bit more discreet because we don't have the presentation on. When we have surveyed individuals, they have said, David, I'm not coming to the library anymore. I'm not visiting the park. Let's go to the next slide. So I can show you more photos. Again, this is now another picture of the front, one of the tables that have been occupied for some time. And as a result, they're not unable to use the services. They feel unsafe. They do not feel that, that they want to go into the library. Just most recently, I had a couple, there are two kids walk by my house on Diamond Avenue, and they had all the books in their arms. And I said, that's wonderful. How was, oh, David, the staff at the city of, of South Pasadena Library are, they are so nice to the kids. Wonderful. But our child went to the bathroom. And it was a terrible experience for us. He came running out because it was an individual that, I'm not gonna go into the description. He was not a library card holder, and he wasn't there to replace. From now on, David, I do not feel we will ever have our children go by themselves to the city of South Pasadena or the library, which is not, we would have to accommodate them from now on. So the whole concept of going to the library is not just rental supervision, but eventually any kids get off. To hear that. Let's go to the next slide. Next picture. That bicycle that Mayor, you've taken extensive time to, to provide for everyone occupied. And again, this has been providing an unwelcoming experience for individuals that has provided a perception, and I want to use the word perception, which is really important. Look at the next slide to the right of it with this picture of the bicycle rack, but where we entered right here. This has become a nesting area where I don't believe that, that has been a security issue, but not only that, but because there has been activity here, the big tree that I showed you, that I told you how parents enjoy going with their kids, that has been providing an unsafe environment where there's still parents still willing to do it, but not as much. They're just telling me, David, it's unsanitary, it's unhealthy, and to be quite frank, because of the other activity, it has been unsafe. Let's go to the next picture. Next picture. When you look to the left, that's the community room. Individuals there, all that type of stuff. Unwelcoming. Drinking fountain. If I want to have little Johnny have a drink, do you really think you're gonna have somebody drink from that fountain when you have that type of situation right there? Again, this is not a situation where this has happened for one day and then it's gone, or for one or two hours. It has been something that has been increasing for the last three years. So why am I sharing this all with you? And then you can go to the recommendations for consideration that I want you, want you all to consider. And I'm sorry about the time. I'm gonna go much faster and I'm almost done. Is there is a perception out there that this is the responsibility of the library? Again, perception, the residents of South Pasadena believe this is something the city of South Pasadena Library should be taking care of. And as a result, when we've been speaking to residents, they are telling me I don't think I want to vote for measure, uh, I'm a favorable man. They are saying, we don't want this measure to pass. Now, I want to tell you right now, my wife and I, we support measure L and we are voting for it. And we will do everything in our power to make sure measure L passes through. But that's us. The perception for city of South Pasadena residents is they do not want to vote for measure L. I could have had a hundred people show up today. That is how, and we said, look, we get it. And again, as I shared with you, we've been patient, my wife and I, for the last three years, working with the city of South Pasadena on this matter, but now it's coming to an end. So that's kind of, now it's getting a little serious that what has happened in the library is no longer contained. I'm not here to point fingers. I'm just here to share with you that there is this perception out here. And it's in my opinion, we have three months before measure L comes up for a ballot, be renewed. I believe it's important for the board as well as the library, the council to make improvements to change that perception. That's why I, I wanted to come here today. If we take a look at this, recommendation for consideration, one thing that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, we'll get to drink the water here. Wi-Fi password. I've noticed that if I sit right in the front, twenty-four seven, I have free access to the Wi-Fi. One thing I want to make a recommendation on is for the employees, they should have their separate Wi-Fi twenty-four seven, that they have access to the Wi-Fi at all times, all the employees. That's a separate password. But I would think it may be a good idea now to have a password protection for the public. And if only during the library hours, what this will allow to do is the library can now control access to it. And if they, somebody wants access, give it to them, but they come into the library and they ask for the password. But then when the library closes, the Wi-Fi gets turned off, folks. So late at night, nobody is using the Wi-Fi. Let's look at number two. All exterior electrical plugs to be removed or locked so public cannot access without permission from the library. I believe this might already be done. I'm not too sure, but it's just, again, these are recommendations. Install security fencing and two walkways to prevent access to the public. Right here, how we came up here, I believe it would be beneficial if we had some type of fire, you know, door thing that could open up, but some type of security, because right here in this hallway, it gets used quite a bit. Heavy drug use, heavy issues, um, uh, there's a lot of abandoned property. Let me just phrase it that way. Um, and then the other, uh, location would be, there was one other walkway, um, oh, the one next to the trash can. Uh, that is also being heavily used as well. Uh, that's a recommendation. Number four, um, establish a bathroom key system until the ba-, the bathroom situation improves. That's gonna be a tough one because I believe it's not just one stall, folks, but maybe that needs to be figured out. If there's any complaint that I'm hearing from the residents of South Pasadena, it is how disgusting the bathroom is downstairs. So disgusting that the employees and the volunteers have their own separate bathroom upstairs and it's locked up to the owner's. So just to let you know, it is a, it's a, it's an issue. And it, and I think we need to figure out how to resolve that because that's unfortunately the negative response I'm hearing from the residents when they leave the, uh, the library. Um. Here's a talk. Well, that's not too tough. Place signage on the park tables outside, limiting usage for two hours and must be approved by the library. So again, we're talking about abuse. There are individuals that have been abusing the privileges that occur all. Not too sure how that's gonna be really enforced, but I just wanted to throw that out. It's something to think about. Um. Improve exterior signage, number six, for no sleeping code, library park usage time, et cetera. You, y'all aren't gonna believe this. There's only one sign that has all the codes. This, it's here by the community room, all the way out there. Nobody's gonna be able to find it. I think a recommendation is to install five signs, five sun. Um. Let's go to number seven, requesting the city council and city manager to use emergency funds to immediately install security cameras for the interior and exterior so the police department can monitor from the dispatch station. I believe there's already budgeted forty thousand dollars. I believe you received those funds or they've been approved last year. I believe the council should see what we need to do to get this approved, get this checked in, and immediately support the library with regards to this matter, so that the police can be monitoring from afar, so that residents or the librarian, when they make their call, they can look on the monitor and say, yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna have to do that. Anything to do to help out the library once again, change the perception. Number eight, request landscaping company to complete major cleanup of the library. I walked around with Ted Gerber from, uh, um, Public Works Department, uh, three days ago. He acknowledges it, it needs to be improved. Uh, and he's working on that as we speak. Within the building and four feet of the property, folks, if you do a perimeter walk right now, you're going to see a lot of disgusting things. And by the way, that is after myself and another friend took two trash bags for, were, and we poured and cleaned it up. You're still gonna smell things and you're gonna still see them. It has not been cleaned up. We need to clean up. This is an area that gets used quite a bit. It's just not being searched. High pressure wash, number nine, high pressure wash, you know, kind of doing sidewalk stables and benches. We, we just had the front done. It was wonderful. It looks clean. I think we need to have a program where we're really high pressure hosing the whole area, uh, and take it from there. Um. Number ten, library officials to walk the perimeter of the library every two hours to see if there's any suspicious activity or report any code violation activity to the police department new task force. This would be a wonderful addition, let's see, just to do it. And then, of course, not every two hours, then eventually maybe in the morning and in the evening, but we've got to, we've got to make sure that there's things not happening, crime being violated, code violations are not happening. We need to really work on this to, to improve the overall image. Number eleven, temp-, uh, temporarily establish a security guard during library business hour to change that perception. This is a dollar item, a big dollar item. So I don't know if this is gonna happen. Again, recommendations, very temporary, but something that can help out the library, their staff members, maybe on that walk, that supervision, if there's anything going on in the library, but also at the outside. Again, perception improving. Establish best practices with adjacent city libraries. I spoke to my brother, who's a resident of San Marino. They've got a great system, uh, going on. They, they've figured out something that all the parents there, they feel very comfortable sending their kids walking, biking, and using the library. We need to find out how other libraries are doing it and establish a best practice, find out where their best practices are to help us out in our situation. And finally, audit to be conducted on the library budget. Measure L, the total budget is one point eight million fifty dollars. One point five of that budget is all associated with wages and salaries. I have nothing to talk about. That's fine. But when you take away ninety thousand dollars, which is attributed to new books and DVDs, you're only left with two hundred thousand dollars for the operation of this library? I think there's gotta be some more funds that need to be allocated there, folks, uh, and, uh, to support, uh, Kathy and her team. Um, and, uh, that's it. Monique and I want to say thank you very much for allowing us to talk. We wanted to share this with you. We're concerned about measure L. We're here to support it. Perception is what it's all about. We need to change this perception. I think if we make some minor, some major changes, use some of these considerations, I think we can make this happen. Thank you very much. Great.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye, guys.
Yep.
Close public comment. Just close public comments.
Close public comment. Okay. So, uh, number two, author exposure of the library for four hours Wednesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-two, to enable staff to participate in strategic planning. It's recommended that the library board trustees, author, I closed the library for four hours on Wednesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-two, from ten A M to two P M to enable staff to participate in all staff strategic planning. Get a motion for that? Do you have any discussion with that, or?
When's Labor Day? Monday, Monday, Monday? No.
Monday the fifth.
Sorry, the fifth. Thank you. Yeah, it's the week, it's the week right after Labor Day.
You have any discussion? Can I get a motion? So, second. I don't mean to rush us, but we.
Who made, who made the motion and who seconded?
Annie, I moved.
And F J seconded.
Thank you. Um, Dean Serwin.
Hi.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long. Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
F J Pratt. Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, and we will adjourn at seven twenty-one. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees, uh, regular meeting. We're starting now at seven o'clock, but seven point two. Uh, could we please get a roll call?
Dean Serwin.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
Annie Chang Long.
Here.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
F J Pratt. Thank you.
Again, our council member is not present. And our mayor is. Do we have any public comment? We already had public comment during special meeting. John, do we have any other public comment?
No other public comments.
Okay, so if we could, uh, our next item is the minutes of the special library board meeting. It's all about special library board meetings, exactly. Uh, special library board meeting, a trustees meeting of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Does everyone have an opportunity to review those minutes? Does anyone have any discussion, their questions, questions, their amendments? Is it, is the meeting we're talking about the one where the two guys, no, we're talking about the special meeting where we voted about the, um, hours. Some of that, okay. Okay, uh, so it's recommended that the board review and approve the twenty twenty, uh, July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two special meeting minutes. Uh, I'd like to make that motion. So, okay, that was me, Sean, and, uh, okay.
That's, I don't think that's correct, you guys. Yeah, you're approving the minutes from, um, the regular meeting. It was a special meeting because we, we canceled the regular meeting in order to have the meeting the week following. So that was technically a special meeting. So it was the meeting with the consultants and then the regular business took place after.
My exciting question about that, I just say.
So just.
I, I, I didn't, I didn't catch it when they made that statement. Wait, I don't know if it's even, was involved, did it arrive? Because one of the things is we like that because she can stop half, and then they all made it sound like they put her name in there just to get it approved and then up she's gone. These guys were great that were here, but I was just curious, that was a little odd to me, like. I mean, I'm not sure that, that relates to the minutes, but they both were there. Yeah, um, do we know why that was?
I do. I can email you that. I don't know that it, since it's not something that's on the agenda. I don't know if I can talk about it, but I'll email you. I think I did email you, but I'll send you another email. Just watch for that.
Yeah, well, um, sorry. Uh, do we have any other comments, questions, or amendments to the minutes?
Yeah.
Uh, I'd still like to make a, a motion to approve those minutes.
Yeah, I moved to approve the, uh, minutes of July twenty-first.
July twenty-first.
Twenty twenty-two.
I'll second. We'll get a roll call, Tom?
Sure. Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long. Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
F J Pratt.
Yes.
And to be clear, Bianca made the motion and Dean seconded?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion passes. We have the third item, administrative policy review, or sin policy, and stalking behavior. I'm just gonna propose, throw out there, in light of our rather lengthy public comment, it might not be the best look to be removing something that could be viewed as related to their complaint.
Can I talk a little bit about the, the reason behind this proposal? So this policy was enacted in nineteen ninety-five. Um, we tried to think about why that might have been enacted at that time. The staff that were here at that time don't have any recollection of any particular incident, but it was when the state of California, between like nineteen ninety-one and nineteen ninety-four, was updating their own stalking laws. So I think it was sort of part of the public conversation at the time. So it's like, it's possible that libraries were looking at those policies and making policies out of that kind of public conversation that was happening around the stalking law, um, between nineteen ninety-one and nineteen ninety-three in California. Um, the reason that I think we don't need it in the policy manual is because it's a very specific, um, it's calling out a very specific partially illegal behavior and also another behavior that is already covered in the Code of Conduct and the South Pasadena Municipal Code. So it seems to me that we, we have covered those bases. Um, the Code of Conduct says that verbal or physical abuse or sexual harassment of library users or staff is prohibited. No illegal behavior of any type. And then the municipal code indicates that, um, it talks about the, the suspension of library privileges for various behaviors, including engaging in any behavior which may pose a written, oral, or physical threat to other patrons, volunteers, or library staff, or, um, seriously threatened verbally or physically, seriously harassed verbally or physically, or aggressively or annoyingly stared at or followed other patrons, volunteers, or library staff about the library premises. So I feel like the issues of harassing and stalking are covered by our Code of Conduct and by the municipal code already. I think this is an outlier. I think it's strange to have one policy about one crime. I mean, you know, are we gonna then have one for every possible, you know, a separate policy for vandalism and a separate policy for all other things that can happen? So I think it's just sort of been left on the books for all these years. It hasn't been looked at since two thousand and two. That's more than twenty, um, you know, twenty years ago now. Um, so that's my opinion. You know, I'm, my goal is to get the administrative policy manual to a place that it's an actually a useful tool for the library and for the staff to run the library, which when it's all filled up with policies that are kind of out of date or don't make a lot of sense or are in conflict with other rules and regulations we already have on the books, I, I think it, it it makes our administrative policy manual a lot less powerful to have things in it that, that we don't need. So that's where I'm coming from. And I know Dean had, you know, has a number of questions about the idea of taking it out, but that's, that's where I'm at.
My, my questions, um, were satisfied. Uh, however, I'm really reflecting what I just heard and proposing that at this moment, particular moment in time, removing language from the, the code, uh, or the, the manual, um, might be seen as, um, a, a step away from what people are asking for.
I don't know how many people would actually know that we took that action. I mean, I don't mean to be, but the, you know, truthfully, not very many people are gonna know that we removed it. And I think that if, if people have questions, they'll, they would ask and we would explain the reasoning behind it.
But it's already covered by two others.
Right. I mean, it's in the South Pasadena Municipal Code, and, and stalking is a, a crime. So clearly, you know, clearly it's prohibited.
Well, and, and what I, what I didn't particularly like about this one, it just says in the library at all times, and I, I thought it needed, I, I was hoping and you, you verified. in the library at all times. And I, I thought it needed, I, I was hoping and you, you verified it for me, Kathy, that we had a broader uh, ordinance that talks about broader and not just in the library. Because I think, you know, as somebody's coming into the library or into the community room, you don't wanna be, uh, accosted. So I, I thought that this one was so, uh, uh, narrow. But I, I think you said something about the whole premise. You said the word premise.
Library premises.
Yes, and I like that. This one I didn't, I thought that was just, it was too narrow.
Yeah, no, it's, it, it, I'm not saying it's well-written and I'm not saying it's useful. I, I'm not opposed to removing it. Uh, I'm just, I'm only questioning whether it, it, especially being an agenda item in the meeting where that took place where others are gonna be potentially scrutinizing. So I'd like to go on record stating that, as Kathy has just in great detail, thank you, explained that even if we do remove this, we're not removing the intention behind it. We're just acknowledging that the intention is, as you just pointed out, Bianca, better covered in two other places. And that this is superfluous and doesn't need to be here.
Yeah, I feel like as long as we have it in the minute, that's clearly why we're, uh, putting this change. And it's actually gonna make it stronger. It's gonna be very clear. You look at that policy and there's no confusion about is it in, is it premises? Like, where do they know? It's not just in. It's all the premises. And if we just have one statement, it'll make that stronger. Well, I could say, I don't, I'm not this one, but I'm totally in the library. I'm outside the library.
I make that argument at least once a week and interpreting the contract that if you say it in one place and you, and you say something different in another place, you're going to create confusion and someone can look at the one place and ignore the other. So it needs better to have, it being more broad, uh, statement covering it by itself and not have this other narrower statement. John, did you get that?
So what, so what, what, what are we asked tonight?
The policy on harassment, stalking behavior from the library administrative policy manual. Um, and noting specifically Kathy, the two other places that it's already covered.
Yeah, the South Pasadena, yeah, the South Pasadena Municipal Code, um, uh, do I have the actual code? Um, SPMC two dash seventy-eight point five for anyone who wants to reference that.
But don't we have actually a, a code of conduct?
Is that, does that have notation or is it just?
The code of conduct, um, is a little bit less specific. I think that the municipal code is stronger. The code of conduct, um, covers, it does say verbal or physical abuse or sexual harassment of library users or staff is prohibited. Um, but again, when we go to enforce, basically, the code of conduct is a set of rules that the South Pasadena Municipal Code refers back to. So when we say library rules, we're talking about the code of conduct. So when someone breaks the library rules, the municipal code describes how we handle that.
So at this point, can we get a motion?
Yeah, I move that we, uh, rescind the obsolete policy on harassing and stalking behavior. In the, what is this called? The administrative policy manual.
I did. Uh, Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Annie Chang Long? Kenneth Gross? FJ Pratt?
Yes.
Thank you.
You, you notice in the article in some, right, the newspaper, it says South Pasadena Libraries for Interacting and Stalking.
It's already out there.
On that happy note, we're gonna move on to library education upgrade plan.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update. Um, you know, obviously, the, the measure will be on the ballot in November. The library can do educational outreach about library services and programs. So staff and I are talking about what that's gonna look like. I think we're gonna do a lot of, um, social media, um, pushes to try to highlight different, different tidbits about the library, things people might not know about what we have to offer, what our circulation statistics look like or other statistics. Um, we're also looking at putting together a new brochure. Um, our brochure is very out of date and we really want one that's, um, a little bit more compelling and a little bit more, um, gives, gives you the flavor of the library, not just the time that we open and, and what we have to offer. So we're gonna be working on that. And then, of course, we're gonna be doing, um, some kind of frequently asked questions about the special tax, so that people have the bare bones facts that are already on the website. But we'll do something in print so that people can pick that up from the library. I just wanted to let you know that, that we are working on that.
Appreciate that. I know it's a fine dance that you get to do to make sure that you stand on the side of education. Uh, do you have any questions on that? Otherwise, we're gonna move on to item five, programming survey results. I'm very excited to hear about that.
Well, Annie, this is the survey that Annie's like, what? No, this is the first time that everyone's seeing these results. So you'll remember that Annie helped us put together a survey and we, um, about, what did I say? Twenty-three people took it. They were all but one storytime parents. Um, and then we stopped, we didn't do it like at the film night because we were already into the strategic planning survey and it was too confusing to have two surveys. So we'll go back to the programming survey in the fall when we do one city, one story and other stuff. But this is the, these are the results that we got from the parents that did respond, um, really quite positive. Um, seventy-four percent of people found the content valuable. Um, they would recommend it to friends or family. Um, interesting and not surprising really, when they were asked if they were more likely to use other library resources and services, not as many people were as likely to, but I think that's because of the demographic, it's parents. So they're using the services for children and they're not as likely to maybe come to a program for adults. Um, and again, that's because that's who took the survey. It was all folks attending storytimes. Um, I was interested in the question, where did you hear about this program? Nobody heard about it from the library email, which is interesting because we spent a lot of time on that. Uh-huh. So that was interesting. Nobody heard about it from our flyers, which, you know, we put a lot of time into in print. Um, but most people heard about it either from the website or from a staff member or from a friend or a family member, which maybe makes sense with families, because I think that once you, you come to storytime once, you're invited to come back to storytime, you hear about it from other parents in your community. So maybe it's not that surprising and we might get very different results when we're, you know, asking people who attend an adult program in the community room. Um, and then we gave them a number of choices of, in terms of things they might be interested in seeing at the library. Um, and hands-on arts and crafts activities was by far the more, more popular thing. And then arts and culture, whatever that means, we didn't define that. So, um, I'm not surprised. Yeah, yeah. And adults like, I mean, it's interesting because I think there's, it's a trend to be doing hands-on things in libraries. And I think that people, even younger people like it too, not just parents and, and kids. So that was interesting. So that we might think more about, um, we haven't really, as a staff, talked about whether we'll make any changes based on what we've learned here. But, you know, we already do Saturday storytime typically has a crafting component, but the other storytimes do not. Um, the toddler storytimes, they're kind of little, you know, they can barely make it through the, you know, twenty minutes of storytime. That's probably their, their span. They might not be able to handle crafts, but for sure on the Saturday family storytime, we do crafting. Um, and then just some of the comments that were offered up, um, at the end of the survey, um, again, a lot of positive feedback.
Thank you for, for undertaking this survey. And I know that the results might be, uh, small, but I think that the consistency that we're seeing from the results is heartening.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm excited to see what, uh, what we see in the fall.
Me too, me too. Definitely from the adult programming.
Our, our people offer the survey when they come into the library. It seems like these results not only limited, but I don't know, I wouldn't make any changes based on the results just because of who, who responded. And I don't think that's maybe not an accurate reflection overall. But people are asked to do it when they come in, you know, maybe there can be a QR code and really ask people to do it.
We could definitely, so, so this came, this originated out of the, um, both the library operation study and the last strategic planning specifically asked, there was a goal that we would get feedback from programs. Specifically, not just general library feedback. Um, so that's what caused Annie to take this on and build the survey for us. So this particular survey is specific to, you attended a program, what did you think about it, et cetera? But certainly, we can have an ongoing, open survey about library services in general, which is basically what we just did with this strategic planning survey. Um, but that's something that, you know, you could have running all the time, just so that people can always be getting that feedback in that easy way. But that's sort of why this is specific to programming is because that was the niche we were trying to fill. Um, but certainly, we could have ongoing surveying of customers. Yeah.
Uh, I have a question where you said that, uh, flyers, bookmarks, and postcards weren't selected. Have, have you costed that out though? So like, if you were to remove a paper, the, you know, producing of it, are we saving any money?
Um, it's not that expensive. Yeah, I mean, and, and anecdotally, we hear from parents, if we don't print the printed calendar, they say, where's the calendar? So, um, yeah, I, I think that it, it's not a very costly effort. And we know for a fact that, that bookmarks do work in other ways. I mean, our press reader statistics per capita, we were through the roof because we did a press, a press reader bookmark. So we know that some of the printed material works. But for whatever reason, this particular, like the, the parents of small children, no, word of mouth, you know, checking the website.
Again, I think we, it, it, as, as, uh, as Annie said, it's wasted early to make any judgment, but I think we tip it on the head that parents of small kids, like, oh, hey, over coffee, I went to the storytime. It was really great. And Billy really enjoyed himself.
Right.
Oh, great, I'll go. Um, when we look at the adult programs or, or older children programs, maybe those, plus I think just from a marketing standpoint, the more impressions that you can get of public library, public library, public library, uh, is, is gonna be good. So I would be encouraged to teach those if anyone.
You're encouraging to see that library staff member was twenty-four seconds.
Yeah.
Said that they, they really tried to talk about it. They know that that matters.
Yeah, I was pleased with that. Yeah, we might, we might, um, make some changes, you know, after, now that we've seen this and sit down as a staff and see if there are any tweaks we wanna make um, to the survey itself. And then we'll launch again, once we, um, we'll do it for the next program, which is, is August twentieth, but starting with the one city, one story stuff in the fall. We'll, we'll do it for those programs. And we can do it for the, the children's storytime starts back up September thirteenth, I think. So we can do it with the families too.
Very nice visuals. Yeah, so thank you. Very nice. Yes, very nice.
Not fancy, but.
Planning updates.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that, um, the last time I checked with the consultant, we had over three hundred respondents to our survey, which is a good number. They'd be happy with a hundred and fifty, yeah. The, so, so that's great. We've really, I mean, we've been pushing it, you know, one-on-one with customers. We sent it invitations to every possible community group. Sally's seen it online. We keep sending it out. Sally's been doing some, uh, groundwork, talking to people. So, so we're excited about that. Um, we have a poster board up at the senior center where people can write on the post-its and put it on the board and also the comment cards at the senior center, since they maybe are, are less likely to do the online survey. So we'll collect that at the end of next week. The survey closes on the eighteenth. Um, and we left it open that long in order to capture some of the back-to-school folks, um, which we'll see what happens. I know that, um, Christian Gervais, the, um, super assistant superintendent for instructional services, sent the survey out to all of the parents and all of the faculty. But I don't, that she did it, I think, like a week ago. I don't know how in tune people were at that time. So we'll see. I think we have lots of results, so I'm not, I'm not too worried about it. Um, we also are completing next week, uh, the consultants' one-on-one stakeholder interviews. So they did stakeholder, holder interviews with, um, do I remember now who I scheduled? Yuki from South Pasadena Chinese American Club. Um, they're doing Shelley Wilkerson, who's the high school librarian next week. Um, they're doing Brian Bright from SP, um, Spark. And I'm drawing a blank on the other two people that I picked, but, uh.
Is it wrong?
No, it's not wrong. It's been sitting on my desktop in that, the list of them for two weeks. So I don't know, I can't remember. If they're done, so that's good. So, and they said they, but they've really enjoyed talking to these stakeholders. So we'll get that information about what that was like when they come back to us. Yeah.
Annie, did you get something from school this year? Now, it's just, it's, it's been hard with back to school because of, of all the other updates. I sent it to the CTA president.
Yeah, we did too.
It's just the timing of those newsletters. I thought they were just in a big room, but the whole room was just kind of just closed. I didn't think about that.
Yeah. It's just a, it's a tough time of year, but I think that, um, you know, we're getting the parents that use the library. Um, we're having the one-on-one with Shelley, which I think is good. And we have Christian Gervais on the community advisory body. So I think that, you know, it's a good thing. And, and Speff, I reached out to Speff and she said, oh, absolutely, we'll, I'll share this with our folks. So hopefully, we'll get, we'll get some school input. Um, the, um, consultants will be back on site September sixth, seventh, and eighth. So, um, we're gonna have a public meeting on the evening of Tuesday, September sixth. So that information will be going out soon. So that'll be, well, you know, everyone is welcome to attend. I encourage all of you guys to attend that night because they'll be, um, you know, they'll have done their kind of analysis of the data they've collected and be sharing that back with folks. So, um, I hope you, you'll be able to come to that. Then on Wednesday, we just voted, we'll have a, an all-staff session in the morning on, on Wednesday. Um, the community, community advisory committee will meet Wednesday afternoon. And then on Thursday morning, the senior staff will be meeting, um, like Barb Mid and I will meet with them to really go through some of the nitty-gritty of what they've learned. So everything is rolling along.
Yeah, we need to have a final presentation also, or since that we should show up for the news to hear.
Well, for this round, they, they won't be meeting with you this round. Um, but you'll be getting, there, there'll be another, um, phase three is what they call visioning. So, um, that's a point where we have to start looking at the goals that were identified and prioritizing. So I think you guys will be a part of that. But they don't have a plan to meet with you in that September window. So that's why I encourage you to come to the public meeting. Yeah, I will definitely do that. And I can share any, um, I'm sure they'll have a PowerPoint that I can share too for anybody.
Of, uh, visioning, aside from the goals for the next, uh, five years, you know, programs, but what? What, how do you see the, the, the big, bigger goals for the future of the library and what? I mean, will any of that be, uh, come out, what people see?
Yeah. I think so. Yeah, I mean, I don't remember the exact words from, you know, the, their proposal, but they definitely referenced the idea that, um, you know, there are gonna be big, bigger things that aren't a five-year, on a five-year plan that are gonna come out, that will have to be captured and, and shared. So yeah, I think, I think they'll capture all of that kind of stuff. Yeah, so this is a short one. I just, I, I did send out, hopefully you got the email, um, if you're on our mailing list. Uh, summer reading program wrapped up. It was a really successful, uh, summer. We, they read double the amount of hours that they did last year. Uh, we had fourteen hundred, uh, people signed up. Really, a lot of adults, like three hundred adults, which was really high for adults. Um, uh, the teens, we had our forty-six teens. They worked a total of a thousand three hundred and eighty-four hours. So they really worked all summer long. Uh, we gave away three thousand books. Um, they had forty-five total programs, including storytimes with two thousand two hundred and thirty-five people attending. So really good summer reading program. Everybody was really happy to be back to in-person, um, and felt good about it. So that was good. Um, like I said before, storytime is on hiatus for a few weeks. We'll be back. Um like I said before, story time is on hiatus for a few weeks. We'll be back September thirteenth through November nineteenth. Um the teen advisory board is putting together its fall cohort. We got twenty-two applications, so we closed to the application. Um so because that's as many as we take, twenty-two is a, is a good number. Um on August twentieth, it's Saturday, August twentieth at seven P M, we're doing a Ray Bradbury program. Um I've sent that out as well. Um that should be fun. Tim Carey is going to be talking about um the windows here. And then um John Sasser will be talking about a short documentary. We'll show, we'll show the short documentary and then he'll be talking about and the sculptor. That the documentary is about, we'll be there and we'll have a nice Q and A. So I think we'll get the typical kind of Ray Bradbury fans, but maybe some other people too. We'll see. They're, they're pretty, you know, I contacted somebody that I know is a Ray Bradbury fan, and he was like, oh, I already know about it. He'd already heard all about it. So that'll be fun, and it'll be nice to actually have Tim have the chance to talk about the windows, which we just haven't done since we had them installed. Um. Yeah. Uh One City One Story, um the selection committee is working through the um. The shortlist of books and they'll be choosing two finalists for the public to vote on. The public will be voting from September first through tenth, and then we'll announce the title on September twenty-sixth. That gives us time to. Buy the books and get them in the collection. Um we have a couple of public events related to One City One Story. We're gonna have an author talk with Jana Ireland. Um she is the author of Regarding Paul R. Williams, A Photographer's, A Photographer's View, Paul Williams, The Architect. Um it's a, an Angel City Press book. It's a really nice floppy table book, so that will be happening on October fourth, and then we have um a partnership with the Community Garden. We're gonna do a natural indigo dyeing, talk about hands-on um activity with the Community Garden on October sixteenth. And then the virtual book discussion is October twenty-sixth. And I think I mentioned previously that we're partnering with Spark on a series of author talks, and the first author talk um. In that partnership is October twelfth, and it's with Leland Sklar, the musician. Mm hmm. Yeah, so that will be coming up, so we'll be taking reservations for that one on Eventbrite. Um I wanted to give you a heads up that the city open house, there's gonna be a big city open house instead of just a public safety open house, which they usually do. We're doing a citywide open house, so it'll be city hall, public safety, and then the library and community services will be. Out in the street. They're, they're gonna close um mission from, I don't know. Just the block, I think. That is October second, Sunday, October second.
Great opportunity for us, but I like.
Yeah, so we'll have some fun activities, um crafts and some giveaways, and lots of staff will be on site to work that event. So.
Can the, can the, the staff can work measure L event?
No, no, just work.
No, but, but we could put it, we.
No, it's a city event.
Oh. Oh, we can, oh.
We can, we can have our frequently asked questions.
Okay.
Flyer and whatnot, but.
You have to be walking around, I think.
So we, yeah.
Around you, certainly as a, as a public citizen.
Right.
How long are you standing up so much?
No one can stop you. No one can stop you.
Fortunately, I don't believe the measure L committee has some budget.
We could indigo dye them.
Um recruitments, I just wanted to give you an update. So our first round of digital services interviews are Monday, the fifteenth. Um two of eight candidates dropped out, and they were the two probably top candidates, so. Um we'll see what we get. We may, we may have to go out and do a second round of recruitment with that one. But we're, we're going to keep an open mind and interview the six that are left and hope somebody's a superstar. Um so that's Monday, and then in the last week or so, we have on boarded three really great new sub-librarians, so we're excited about that. One is a um. Retired for many, many years at Burbank Public Library, so she has a ton of experience and um really brings a lot to the table. Um and. Another one. Who we had hoped would have, would apply, who did apply for the digital services position, but decided to not, she didn't. Want to do that job, so she's not, no longer in the running, but she's with us as a sub, so that's great. She's already been helpful with, you know, just, she's really sharp, so lots of things that she's been able to help us with um even as part-time.
Do you know why the two dropped out?
One got a full-time job elsewhere, and the other one doesn't, wants to be a teen librarian. She doesn't want to be a, a digital services librarian. She wants to do children's services, youth services.
And we don't.
We don't have a, we don't really, I mean, we don't have a dedicate, we, we had a dedicated position for youth services in twenty thirteen when it was eliminated at that time, so we haven't had a. Teen librarian for a long time. We do, are one of our part-time children's librarians handles our teen services, so she does tab and um. Uh mostly tab is what we do. Um so yeah, she, she, yeah, this position, there's too much to do. She has to do what she has to do. So.
Thank you.
Yep. And that's all that I have. If you guys have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. I guess I could um. Not to talk about this because it's not on the agenda, but I will say that over the last week or so. Um the community, I've, I've been hearing a lot from the community about the park and the, the safety and the situation in the park. Um I've had um a couple of meetings with pretty much every department, city attorney, public works, police. Planning, code enforcement. We're working on it, you know, that that's what I can tell you. Um David sent me these recommendations also, so I have those, and I'm happy to um. I guess put that on the, we can put a conversation on the agenda, but I think we have to be just very um careful about. What we say when we're talking about the situation with the unhoused, um because I don't want to jeopardize. Whatever, whatever the city might be working on to try to handle some of these issues, we need to just be careful about what we say on the public record, I think. Um. So, but so that you know, we're not oblivious to these issues. Um I think that uh. It's just, it's, you know, as you know, it's a, a problem society-wide, and it is really hard. The city doesn't have. Code that makes it easy to deal with, especially the unattended belongings. Um the, the hygiene, health and. Humans, you know, the health and safety issue is probably our most promising tact, so we're working on it and um. I can just keep you posted about that.
Appreciate that. Um we may want to, I think it would be worthwhile if no one opposed to it. To put on the agenda uh for next month, a follow-up with you regarding um David's uh presentation.
Sure.
Uh I, I hope no one was offended that I let him go, but it was the right thing to do. Um but in the future, I, I would like to, we, we could also put an agenda on. To discuss what our policy will be for public comment.
But that's what my, yeah, I mean, along with that, I didn't know what the, I mean, what's good, we let them. Say what they say and and good information, some of the stuff I didn't know, but I didn't know what the expectations are. That we would discuss them. I mean, I didn't know why, what is the point of public comment if we don't have to put on the agenda later to discuss it?
That's why I think we should. Yeah, what is the, by the way, being new to this, to the world of trustees, what is the policy? Someone comes and makes.
There's a policy agreement.
Right, and we can't regent this, and the, the policy is that we cannot discuss anything that's not on our agenda. So as Kathy suggested and I'm proposing now, what we can do is we can put on a future agenda to discuss something that was raised. To want to feel that it's uh of that important. I think this is something that raised to that level of import.
Sure.
That we should put it on for uh for discussion or follow-up.
Okay.
It allows the public to see the agenda, so that people, more people want to come home, and they know that that's the topic of our business.
And they can see that we're taking it seriously and not just ignoring.
Right.
That's why I wanted this to be a policy and let it get out of hand, if somebody doesn't give, give public comment. Then it is on the agenda, no matter how modern the issue, unless it gets out of hand, it's not doctor.
I don't know that we can without that.
No, it's a brown act issue, so it's, it, we're simply not allowed to discuss things that aren't on the agenda, so.
No, I mean, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
To, to put each item in the trace.
Oh, I see, which I think.
That's, that sounds great in, in concept, but in practice, if, as I pointed out, this is our first public agenda item. But um some of the committee uh commissions get two, three, four, five, six uh public comments each meeting. Uh so it would make their agendas be unwieldy, so why I think that we should give consideration to each item that's raised. I don't know that we want to have a, a standing policy to automatically agendaize each public comment to follow up.
Well, and I don't know if I was out of order, but I, they asked me how it works, and I told them that they can comment and we're silent. So, so they, so they coming in tonight, they knew that we couldn't discuss with, they're my neighbors.
I think David is on a commission, so I think he sort of knows, right, he's on public works commission, so he, he.
He seemed, he seemed to have a little bit of insight and.
Yeah.
Also some uh uh.
He wasn't expecting.
No, no, he knew how this handled, because he did ask me about coming, and then I, you know, remind.
So yeah, we'll do that.
In general, I think what we can do, especially if we have, um if this becomes a continuing item and we have three, four, five people, we can. Announce at the beginning that we will be just for the quorum reasons, sticking to the.
Yeah. Yeah. That sounds good. That's all I have.
Uh okay, does anyone else have anything else regarding library operations? Okay, so we're on a communication, for president communications. Um I think I've already stated my piece. I think that we're doing um. Like good work, and thank you Kathy for the uh agenda items of the uh updating the policies. Um I think we should continue uh to do that uh because. It goes right in line with the strategic plan. We're updating our strategic plan, we should be updating everything and at least putting eyes on it, especially ones that. Haven't been looked at in twenty years, and I think we have a few more of those. So thank you. Uh number nine, board communications, let's start with our vice president, the honor.
I have nothing to um to add on, but can I just? So I think if I understand what Kenny was saying, if this, if this issue gets put onto an agenda the next time, then we can talk more about.
Yeah, well, I'll put a, we'll put an item on that's library and library park. Health and safety concerns or something, and we'll, we can discuss.
Uh okay, so then, um then I'll hold my comments and discussion. For then, okay.
I would, I, I think I should advise it more that we are all still subject to Brown Act, so more than two of us at a time can discuss that. That's correct.
Correct.
I'll find a meeting.
Yeah.
I'll find a meeting.
Right.
Meeting.
So no more than two, two or members.
Yeah.
Didn't you know?
Yes. Uh. Annie, cause you're here, I'm going here now. And our secretary. Hope it's a point.
Yeah, no, but I'm sorry, it was amazing and um. It's been so good about the surveys, the strategic plan surveys, because thanks for that. I think the staff will have asked me to take it. I was like, well, lovely, I did take it.
Oh, but I know people, I went to the concert on um Sunday night and was going up to people in the audience, you know, and people were like, yeah, I already took it. Yeah, they were like, I don't need it. I already, you already told me. I've been told like ten times.
This is testing to our community, that we got already doubled, you know, they thought.
Yeah, they were, they're shocked. They're like, I don't know what you're doing over there, but it's amazing. Yeah, it's our community.
No, I was great to hear a couple of comments for the first time and that she could go down, so that's uh. It's good. I was, I was impressed, and she loved it first, and we'll go through that.
Oh.
Um.
I know, I know, you'll take it over.
Oh. So can I, can I ask, re- remind me again, but when something's on the agenda, cause like I go to city council meetings, if it's on the agenda and we go and make a public comment. You still can't discuss, is that?
Briefly, briefly, you can make comments about it, but I never will hold it, because when you two dollars too long. All the A D C they sit on, even if you have three people come, you may refer to it, make a comment about something, we can't discuss in detail.
And you can't also make a decision. Like the comments earlier today about you need to do something about this thing, someone moving, I'm going to do something about this thing, second.
But if, but if something comes up on the agenda, then we, we could, as commissioners, trustees, we can talk more. If it's on the agenda, right.
Got it.
So if they're making public comment on a numbered agenda item, then when they, when they concluded their comment, you can make a remark. You don't go into detail.
You can go into detail when it's on the agenda.
Can you then, you can ask for clarity, but you can ask for clarification and detail?
Okay.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so you can, okay.
Yeah. That's when you can discuss it in full.
So I think we had two people talking about it.
Okay, all right, so now I've, I've got it, cause now, yeah, I always get a little confused when it's. An, an agenda item or non-agenda item. Okay, got it. So really, what you want to do. Is when you go to meetings, yeah, you really want to go to, when, when something's on the agenda, that's when you really want to make your public comments.
Exactly right.
So you have to be more strategic.
Well, I think they were very strategic. I, I anticipate that they'll be back, because this way it's on our agenda, and I think that was there now.
Well, now, for, for those of us who make public comment, I need to strategically look at the agendas and say, that's when I should make a public comment. Yeah.
It does carry with it. To go when it's not on the agenda and speak. Um you definitely have the right to speak on an item that's before that, that body has per view of. So someone's coming here and talking about the condition of the roads, uh really not your per view. Right? But going to the city council meeting or um public works commissions, those are two perfect comments there as well.
Well, they kind of went public, the, the condition of the road in front of the library.
Yes, you could, yeah, you could talk about that, and it affected weapon, yeah, we can tie that one. Um but when someone does come and speak um during general public comment. The one thing you could do is say, you know, that's a really important issue, we could, we should agendaize that for a future meeting. And then from that perspective, then you're able to. Very briefly, as the mayor say, talk about it in order to put it on that future agenda.
Oh, so we could have while they were here, comment.
You could have commented, uh, yeah.
Okay.
A few seconds.
But how, how will the public, how will the public know that it's going to be on a future agenda?
Cause the agenda is a public set. No, but they're saying we tell them, I mean, I think maybe.
But they're gonna, they're gonna come and ask me.
Maybe you want to come back next.
They're gonna, they're gonna come over to my house, and they're gonna, they're gonna ask me, so.
But you can say that we're.
So I can't, cause they're my neighbors.
It's been agendaized or a future meeting.
You could also say, well, I moved this on for the next meeting, and that way they would know um if this is going on in that meeting. Or bring us back in October, once you've had time to really, you know, give, give an indication of when you would like to have this come back. And then Kathy would, and you can also say, um, please notify them when it's gonna be on the future. There's all kinds of ways you can do that.
But we did, tonight, though, we didn't, we didn't agendas, we didn't do anything to put this on the agenda for next.
We're doing that.
We did.
They were, yes.
So we did, we did, so will be, okay, only because I know they're gonna come over to my house. They're gonna come over like.
I mean, if you watch it, I mean, I think that the city council, which obviously is. Follows the rules exactly, which we maybe don't do or something, but if you want to make a motion to agendaize it for the next meeting, then it would be. Official that we're gonna put it.
Then I would like to make a motion that we agendaize a um a discussion at the next meeting. For follow-up on the issue of. Bewarded, the um health and safety of the library and library. Health, health and safety concerns regarding the library and library.
And they're notified and they'll be back.
Can I make just a friendly amendment? I, I don't know if we need to do a um. A follow-up. Um I think we might just want to generalize, put on the agenda about the library park. I don't, I don't know if we really want to. Follow up just on this.
I, I meant, I meant a follow-up in general about it.
On that topic.
On his specific.
Just, just, just a, but just a ge- a general agenda size item about the library park, rest, whatever. Okay.
Yeah, I think we got it. Okay.
We have a second today, but so the, the motion is to have as an agenda item.
Monique for her purse. Okay, she's not.
I'm fucking you, you can tell her right now.
Yeah, I mean, so the motion is that we have an agenda item to discuss health and safety concerns of the library and library.
Did you get that, Sean? Could tell it.
Yes, I got that.
Wait, wait, Annie, second. So this will be on next month's agenda. Which is a, among other things.
Okay.
And what in the meeting? Uh the meeting is uh. Uh, the meeting is, uh, what's the date, Sean?
September eighth.
September eighth.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
No, that's fine.
Dean Sarwin?
Yes.
Bianca Richards?
But can I, can I just, what, what is the topic again going to be on the agenda?
It's the health and safety concerns regarding the library and the library park.
Okay, yes, okay.
Okay, Annie Chang Long? FJ Pratt? Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Kenny, you have any comment?
Uh, no.
That would be great. Uh, council liaison communication, we don't have one. Um, I don't know if the mayor. I think, but, uh, very quickly, I just would recommend a next two months meeting, you have a six-point agenda. In addition to the public, if you would like a sergeant or video.
Yeah.
I think uh. Somebody like Kathy would say as well, if you want, like. So, and, oh, this, maybe it's either come off with regards to the, the federal law and the stuff, and what you can, can't do with homeless people in a park or something like that. If you're voidy versus idle cases, come off it. Is it, you have a lot of things on that list, much, you can do everything legally.
Yeah, I know, when I was reading that list, I, I, yeah, like that.
The, the other thing is, anyone bring up, we're going to be starting a mobile crisis unit, starting after next Thursday.
Oh.
Kathy and I have been working on it for about.
I need that.
But Kathy and Karen, we kind of created a um social service committee that is at the city. We've been doing it a couple times, we started online.
Right.
We brought in other resources like Department of Health, other agencies, sports for development. Uh, there are theories on the churches and stuff like that, with their experiencing. Kathy showed that it really pushes, it went there at Kathy a long time ago. What happens at the library when you, when people show up in the morning or just fighting, because I know we can't take them, we can't keep people apart. It happened in Weyden where they tried to keep people apart. And then we're all the way to Court of Appeals, we go to Court of Appeals and you can't do that because unless you find a house. So Kathy said she called and they said, no, we'll be over there in seventy-two hours.
Yeah.
So we said, we got it in the immediate, so this mobile crisis is starting, we stand me up for four or five hours, about half, eight hours, ten hours. Katie, our new city, uh licensed, you have those scientists on there with experience. After a few months of tour response with police, please, they, and, and. A psychologist, real estate, please, you can go, they have their problems. It would be more, they can never respond right away. We've been down there in Orange County, with, with the Huntington Beach, I went on a ride along with them in Shannon. They started their first mobile crisis event in California. So we saw what they did, they started off filling. We found out, I think, you know, showed the whole sign is uh, a very large hundred calls they get in the community. We thought the majority would be going to people on the streets, they're not. They're going to people experiencing, you know, straight down to the house, in school, and at work. Interesting. Yeah, actually, fifty-three percent of those recent statistics, you can even go online or visit the home. And the reason Sarah is involved, when you brought it up earlier, we've only got a couple of issues of homeless, sometimes a week might go by nothing. Next week, five or six, he seriously did that. The mayor did a ride along, people worked with Department of Children's Services. And you're like, what she found out with the police, going to homes, going to school, the police weren't equipped to deal with the problem at the home. Right. So she's really involved, our, their council meeting supported it, they were four to one, our Katie was a hundred percent supporting, around one hundred percent. They did, we're starting, the strange people start to move slow, they need the police to fire. All the churches, the service people, moving around, the library, where your children are homeless stay. They're, they're an agency called Ellen, Center for Drug and Alcohol Abuse and Crime. They've been around for fifty-five years, they've got resources, they've got housing. We just don't hold it family about a month ago, pick up some food to the, to the, to their needs now. Great organization, you've actually also hired for a cost of a million dollars, really intense people with drug and alcohol abuse in other cities. And for the other cities, I was in meeting with Alani just several months ago, we've got an issue of about five hundred and fifty-one. The comparable were low, but it still should be better. They're on the train here, it's just a place for them to get off and get some stuff. So we're rolling it out, if you need any questions, I'll probably try to get back. I think it would be absolutely, uh, can we, uh, add that we'll make sure a, an invitation off to. I think that that way he can address those issues. He'll be able to do so, correct, in response to public comment?
Um, if it's agendaized, yeah, absolutely.
Great. Because I think knowing that information will be soothing for people to know that. We are actually, as a city, taking steps within the boundary.
We just had a family, you know, Grafton Park, two weeks ago, after the American woman, the daughter, who was gone. We had a house in court six months ago, they got, that got seven, seven day one night, the agency coming, we're here, so you've got to leave. And I stand solid. And so when you come back to, it's a safe share of the time, you, you got to come here, you take the seat, you better approach it, you're back, where else? It is very much where we are now.
That's good news, Michael. That's good. So that's, that's great.
Uh, our friend representative is not here, but Sarah, are you?
I am the friend representative, yeah. Uh, thank you uh for giving a report on the summer reading program. That uh is a program that the friends pay for every year. So we're glad to see that big step. Um, the newsletter is coming out every month and I think all of you are, are getting it. Michael's getting it, so I think I'm sending it to him. Um, we attended uh Women's Division, thank you, a lot of you were there. And um we got some coverage, some of the craft on that. Um, and there's a friends representative, myself, on the library strategic planning uh community advisory committee. And uh, let's see, July was the fortieth anniversary of the bookstore. And uh we set up a, a friend, the founder's memorial fund. And we've uh gotten thirteen hundred dollars so far donations. And with the, oh, and then they had a coupon for a few free books. For the um anniversary with the Chinese-American club and uh the library, we, we sponsored Far East. Um, pizza, that was capacity crowd.
Great.
Wow, was great.
So good.
And uh we'll be having a retreat this month, friends, and that's my report.
Thank you. And again, thank you so much for uh the work that you do. I don't, is it common to have a, a library of our size that has such a robust uh support group?
I think it is, yeah, I think so, in a, in small communities, especially where there's a strong community spirit, usually have strong friends boards. We are lucky. There's no doubt about it, yeah.
Library director, do you have anything for us?
Nope, I'm done.
So I believe we're going to move into closed session now.
Yep, and so Sean will stop the recording. And I'll introduce Andrew Jared, who's, who's our city attorney.
Pardon me, am I pausing or am I ending the recording at this point?
I, I think you can just, we, we can just end it. I don't think we need to, yeah.
Um, no, actually, we need to go back into open session to make an announcement, so.
Okay, so pause it.
Okay, give me one, give me one moment to move to the other computer.
Yeah, let us know when you're ready. No, sorry, Sally, you're not invited.
Okay, I'm going to pause it now.
Thank you, Andrew, for that lovely closed session.
Certainly. Director, to reflect that the board recessed to close session uh with all members present. Discuss the items on the agenda. Direction was provided uh to the office of the city attorney. Uh, regarding those items, no final action was taken, a reportable action was taken. And the uh board then recessed from both session at nine oh seven P M. That concludes the report from both session.
Excellent, thank you so much. Uh, there being no, nothing else on the agenda. Uh, I would like to adjourn at nine oh nine uh with the um. Statement that we are currently scheduled to be meeting on September eighth. We'll be our next meeting.
Okay, stay cool, everybody.